Good evening. Called a meeting on February 8th, 2016, Salisbury City Council meeting for order. Couple of little businesses of order. Please silence your cellphones or turn them off if you wouldn't mind, please. Appreciate you taking pictures if you'd like, but if you keep the sound down, that'd be great. Case of an emergency, please don't use the elevators. There are stairs out the door to the right at the end of the hall and out the door to the left. Follow the hall around the little hook and there's the stair there as well. So, we don't have a pastor this evening with us, so if you would join me in observing a moment of silence, appreciate that, thank you. If you would join me in my pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have some fun stuff.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you.
Vice President, thank you. We do have some fun stuff this evening. I hope everyone will forgive me because I have lost my voice over the course of about six weeks of a never-ending cold that I think came from a five-month cold. So, we have a community organization who is going to make a presentation this evening, represented by Erica Joseph. That organization is the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore. So I'd like Erica to come forward. But before you make your presentation, I have a presentation to make to you. This is a proclamation to Erica Joseph. Erica Joseph was named to the 2015 list of Maryland's leading women by the Daily Record, a Baltimore-based Maryland newspaper. Whereas the Daily Record annually recognizes 50 women 40 years old or younger for their tremendous accomplishments thus far in their careers after consideration of their professional experience, community involvement, and commitment to inspiring change. And whereas Erica Joseph is a Salisbury native who began her career at the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore approximately 12 years ago and was named president of the foundation just last year. And whereas Erica Joseph is also an executive committee member of the Maryland Community Foundation Association, thereby expanding the boundaries of community. And whereas Erica Joseph was honored along with her fellow award recipients on December 7th, 2015, at an event at the Weston in Annapolis. Now therefore, I Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim February 8th, 2016 as Erica Joseph Day. And I do so very proudly, I do so very proudly because Erica is a fantastic asset to this community. Erica.
Thank you. I don't really think I can top that. That is wonderfully amazing, thank you very much, Mayor Day and to the council. I'm thinking that perhaps I was invited here under all circumstances to make a presentation.
Maybe.
I have no idea what you're talking about. We can't wait for your presentation.
I bet. Well, I am so appreciative of the opportunity from here to share some information about the foundation. Certainly, this was unexpected and very much appreciated as well. So thank you to the members of the council and to the mayor and to those interested this this evening. I just wanted to take an opportunity to... One of the first questions that people ask when I say that I work for the Foundation of the Eastern Shore is, "What is a community foundation?" And just as a little historical perspective, about 100 years ago in Cleveland, Ohio, the very first community foundation was founded. It was basically established because bankers primarily were holding trusts that community members had put with them to invest in their community. And the banking community looked around and said, "It doesn't really make sense for all of us to be doing this individually. We should put this together so that we're not all administrative individuals. They're all for community benefit." Hence, the first community foundation was started. Since that time, about 800 community foundations all across the country and many more around the world have been established by local citizens. Your Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore serves three counties: Somerset, Wycomoco, and Worcester. And it was started by community leaders that many of you may know: Bob Cook, Oscar Carey, Mariana Holloway, Frank Morris, names that sort of invoke this commitment to community. And that vision and that commitment to making this area a better place, that investment through community philanthropy, really is tangible at the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore. The power of endowment brings people together so that gifts, large and small, focusing on perpetuity. So, things that people want to happen forever or causes that they know will last through the test of time. It's unique to us at the Community Foundation and really an asset for the lower Eastern Shore. Since our inception in 1984, the Community Foundation has been entrusted with direct gifts from donors totaling nearly $100 million. What's more interesting than that fact is the fact that during that time, it also distributed more than $60 million back to the community. And yet, at the end of last year, it still held about $100 million in assets. That's that power of endowment. And most of the gifts that we receive, more than 70 percent of them are less than $500. So this isn't about the size of the contribution from individual community members, but it's about pooling those together. We have more than 600 funds. So I think the most interesting aspect of the Community Foundation, for people who don't know what it is, is that it's not this thing that puts money out into the community. It's the organization that helps individuals who've established each and every one of those funds. Some of them to benefit specific organizations, some of them for scholarship, some of them to meet a particular purpose, for example, maintenance at Ben's Red Swings, or to support the Winter Wonderland of Lights, or to support Red, White, and Moon, or one of our more recent funds, which was started with the help of Councilwoman Laura Mitchell, for the Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities for a scholarship fund. Each and every one of those funds does a specific thing each and every year. And our job at the Community Foundation is to help make that possible for years to come. The connection that we have to the community, individuals, the businesses, the civic groups, the organizations, and the local government, they're all partners and examples of donors to your community foundation. Contributions large as small, some of them as small as $5. But what they do is that they last forever and each year generate income for the causes that they've established to support. One of our primary missions at the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore is to promote philanthropy. And the reason that that matters is because the needs, as all of you have in this room, are tremendously diverse and many of them very, very significant. Sometimes it seems overwhelming to figure out how we will meet them all, but through public-private partnerships, through volunteerism, those are the activities that help us make the difference that we want to have in the community. Many times, people ask us how to get started, especially if you're not in a position where you think you want to start a fund or make a significant major gift. There are a few suggestions for things that we often encourage. First, to support what matters to you, thinking about the things in your life that have had an impact. For example, do you have an aging family member who's been supported by hospice or other programs? Do you know families who are in distress, who need emergency assistance, basic human needs? Do you know a child who is very full of promise but who has real limitations because of their circumstances? Or have you ever fostered an animal? Do you have a passion within your life? And that's a place to start. More than 500 different organizations received a grant from the Community Foundation last year. That boggles my mind to think that there are so many organizations right here in our community, but it just goes to show you the diverse needs and the diverse opportunities for making a difference. So nonprofit organizations can fit the passions and the causes you care about. The second thing we encourage is not to focus on the dollars. Certainly, financial needs are great for many organizations, but there are so many small nonprofits and even some of the larger ones where a very modest gift can make a tremendous impact. And also, don't be deterred by the fact that you can't do what someone else is doing. It's important to do what is a meaningful gift to you. Next, we encourage people to volunteer and to connect locally. Certainly, there are a lot of organizations that have regional or national impact, but to be able to walk in to a local organization and see those needs firsthand also helps you identify how you can make a difference and lets them be accountable to you for the contributions that you're making. And last, we look to peers. You can look around and see friends and family and colleagues, people at your church and others, who are really walking the talk. And so ask them what they're doing, find out how you can get involved with them, or you can always contact us at the Community Foundation. With more than 500 different organizations last year who we were able to connect funds to, there's certainly no shortage of opportunities for us to help find the organization doing what you care about. It's part of what we do. And lastly, I just want to encourage you to give back, certainly through your time, your talent, your financial resources, however you can make a difference. Two things I would like to point out, just because they're relatively new on the charitable giving landscape, is that at the end of last calendar year, the IRA charitable rollover was extended for people who are in a position to make those gifts directly from their IRA. We're certainly in a position at the Community Foundation to help people with some more complex giving opportunities. And then finally, the Endow Maryland Campaign, which is in its second year, which allows individuals and businesses to receive a tax credit in the state of Maryland to gifts at qualified endowment funds at Maryland community foundations. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to share information with you. I thank the folks at PAC 14 for spreading this information out to the community. They also hold an endowment fund at the foundation. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you for the recognition, Mayor, and for the time this evening.
Thank you. Happy Erica Joseph Day.
Your husband, what about your son? He's really...
I'm proud of him. I'm thankful, very grateful.
Thank you. I'll just take a second to remind people, if they have a fourth grader or you're a teacher at a school, you teach fourth grade, please get involved with the Maryland Municipal Leagues If I Were Mayor contest. That's where that funding for those scholarships that Erica mentioned from the Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities goes to the winner for District 1 and one for District 2, which is Lower Shore, Upper Shore, respectively. That's who gets that scholarship money. So you've got to participate, though. If you don't write your 250-word essay, you're not going to win the scholarship. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second presentation we have this evening is also sort of a dual presentation. I have a presentation making, then there's a follow-up presentation. But I want to recognize another fantastic organization in our community who has also, like the Community Foundation, given so much back. And that organization is Operation We Care. So I have a proclamation here. An Operation We Care is a community organization which began in 2007 as a grassroots effort by the Eastern Shore Chapter Harley Owners Group to show support and appreciation for United States military personnel by sending care packages around the world to the brave men and women protecting all Americans and their freedoms. Jeff and Diana Merritt coordinate the year-round efforts of local citizens, businesses, and civic organizations, along with many volunteers to partner with them. As care package items are collected, sorted, packed, and then sent to Delmarva troops semi-annually in May to honor Armed Forces Day and November to honor Veterans Day. Operation We Care partners with 16 local schools so students can participate in the community project, which teaches them patriotism and the value of America, as they decorate the inside panels of the boxes, reaching out to people they don't know personally but know are deserving of their thanks. Operation We Care has generously, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, but it's in the proclamation, has generously chosen to support the Salisbury Police Department as well as other agencies across the Eastern Shore. We appreciate that. And it's going to assist in the establishment of a program that the Colonel's going to talk about in just a moment here. And so now therefore, I Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim February 7th as Operation We Care Day. So it's really a week of special days, Erica Joseph Day and Operation We Care Day. So Jeff, Diane, if you'd all come forward, I'll allow you to make your presentation. I just want to give you a copy of this proclamation.
No?
Yeah, the podium is all yours, sir. Ashley, do you want to get a picture real quick?
Yeah, just to suggest me to come in.
Thank you.
I don't know how I can follow up from Erica. That was pretty spectacular. But yeah, we're in our ninth year. We've actually shipped over 9,000 care packages. When we started, it was really simple and really easy, and now it's become a lot more complex. We've developed many, many partnerships in nine years with a lot of organizations in this area, including the Community Foundation. We've brought people on board along the way. Victoria Kent and Sophia Smucker, Victoria coincidentally works for the Community Foundation. Sophia works for Chamber of Commerce. They've teamed up to help us with our website and Facebook page and kind of reel me in off the ledge when I go out too far. We do a lot of things besides sending care packages now. Just today, we're working with a family down in Worcester County, who's a family member, a Vietnam veteran, passed away a few days ago, and last month, he canceled his life insurance. So the family's looking for burial expenses. I got the phone call earlier today, made a few more phone calls, and it looks like tomorrow, we're going to have everything put together because of networking and other people in the community stepping up. Erica, you know, it's all about networking. Who you know, who you can call. This guy does this, that girl does that, and you just make the connection and it all comes together. One of the other things we do right now is help local veterans service organizations transport our veterans to Pocomoke, Cambridge, and Baltimore to the VA medical clinics. Down here on the Eastern Shore, everything is so spread out, transportation is really not available. So we've opened up a fuel account at Taylor Oil Company, and we're funding it to help these organizations get our veterans to the proper medical care that they deserve. So as far as organizing the appointments, that's a whole nother can of worms, but at least we can get them to the doctors and the medical care that they need. The reason we support the police departments and the fire departments is because a lot of the members of those departments are veterans or in the reserve military. So we felt the connection fits right with Operation We Care. We support the military. These men and women serve their community every day. In the police department and the fire department, they can get called up to be deployed at any time, and they're away from their families. You know, they serve us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. It's the least we can do to help them get the tools that they need to do their job, whatever those tools are. So we're just happy to have all the connections that we have, the partnerships, the schools. We're now up to 25 schools now in the area that help us decorate the boxes and write letters to the soldiers, and we get them by the stacks. We're working on a cellphone collection program where the cellphones are recycled or refurbished and turned into phone cards, which will be sent to the troops overseas so they can call their families. And these troops, they write back to us. We got one letter a few years ago that was on an MRE wrapper. So he couldn't find anything else to write on, so he tore up his MRE wrapper and wrote us a note and put a stamp on it and mailed it.
It's designed for that.
Yeah. And we got it halfway around the world. That's even crazier. We've actually already sent over 100 care packages this year. We sent 23 to a unit in early January that lost six airmen the week before Christmas over in a suicide bomb attack outside of Bagram Air Base. You might have heard that on the news. I was able to get the address to that unit. They told me how many were in the unit. We packed care packages and sent them off. They sent us pictures that unfortunately I'm not allowed to share until they come home after April, but when you see these pictures, they're worth way more than 1,000 words because every one of them's got a smile on their face. So, and they're holding our care packages. So how cool is that? So, Terry? Can you talk about some of the other cool things we do?
Ah, we do the Never Forget Project. My name's Terry Scott. And this Never Forget Project goes ahead and helps veterans and active military families when they fall short on their electric bills or their washing machine breaks or their house roof starts to leak. We get a call, we go down there, we check it out, and we see how we can assist these veterans to stay on their feet and these military families who, you know, are not the highest-paid individuals in the world. So while their wife or husband are away, we go ahead and try to assist. And that's, you know, I got involved with Operation We Care because my son is full-time military now. He is only getting ready out for his third deployment. And just one personal quick story, and I'll let you go, is that his last deployment out, they received, what was 200?
255.
255 care packages. His job was to hide them, cut the names off of them, and get them ready to hand out. That morning, they spotted, it looked to be about 60 individuals coming across the desert. He put a night scope on them and realized they were our troops. The Army was coming back in from a forward operating base deployment. They had been out there a long time. They did not get picked up. They had to march in. Over several days, they had no food left, no shampoo, nothing. And so what they did is they took their first boxes for those men to show brotherhood, and they opened them up, dumped them on the ground on a big blanket, offered them their showers, and then those men got incredible stuff in there. And that's what Operation We Care is all about. Now, I can't be more adamant about that. When those kids draw those pictures inside those boxes, I asked my son Curtis, "What do you do with those? Do you throw them away?" I wanted to know, and he said, "No, Dad." What we do is our unit, we put the pictures on the wall. We've had a real bad day. We go in there and we hit that wall on the way in, and sometimes some of us sit there and look at it. He said, "And that's what makes us go forward."
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or thank you for your time? Mr. Mayor?
Jeff, you want to present the...
Do you do that now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Might be better in front of the podium rather. Maybe turn the microphone around.
Wherever's good. How about right there? Just so everybody knows, we, as the mayor alluded to, we recently donated some money to some local police departments in hopes that they would take the money and use it for the tools that they need to do their job. And this particular donation is to the Salisbury City Police Department, and they're going to use it to start up a police explorer post. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Absolutely. I'd like to thank you, not only as a member of the police department, but a retired military, I think, 22 years of service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. So this means a lot in multiple ways. I appreciate it. I know on behalf of the chief, we're looking forward to actually starting a restart, I should say, for a program we found out that a few years ago, before I was either here, I've been here 20 years, but before that, I've had it. So looking forward to getting this going. And I know some of the youth in the community that we identify, if they're interested in that, of course. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything that you do. Greatly appreciated. Real quick, we have two other special guests from Troop 149 in the back of the room, hiding in the corner. We have Gabe and Jacob, see, I remember, who are doing merit badge, working on their merit badge here at the council meeting tonight. Welcome. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I also want to offer our condolences to Chief Hoppus and Assistant Chief Ryan Records, both who are now their fathers in the last day or so. Our hearts go out to them. Keep them in your prayers. Okay. Now that all the fun stuff's done, except for that last part, that wasn't so fun. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is it moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If your vote's aye, and it's unanimous. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is it moved?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols, good evening.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the December 21st special meeting minutes, the December 21st closed session minutes, January 4th work session minutes, and January 11th regular meeting minutes. Resolution number 2588, accepting overtime reimbursement funding from the United States Marshal Service, where the Salisbury Police Department's office serves assigned to the Capitol Area Regional Fugitive Task Force. Resolution number 2589, accepting a donation from Operation We Care in the amount of $1,000 to be used towards the establishment of a Salisbury Police Department explorers post. And resolution number 2590, authorizing the central system line fees, water tap fee, and sewer tap fee of the city's comprehensive connection charges to be waived for 423 coal circles. A Habitat for Humanity project. And that would be it.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If your vote's aye, thank you very much. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2369 for second reading. That's a budget amendment for insurance proceeds.
Is it moved?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman, good evening.
Good evening. Ordinance number 2369 is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY '16 general fund budget to appropriate insurance proceeds received in FY '16 to aid in the purchase of a new vehicle for the police fleet. Salisbury Police Patrol Unit 1477, 2014 Chevrolet Caprice, was involved in a motor vehicle accident and deemed a total loss. And whereas the replacement of the vehicle will allow the Salisbury Police Department to maintain a sufficient number of patrol vehicles to effectively patrol all areas of the city. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department is requesting the insurance adjustment for vehicle 1477 in the amount of $27,123 be placed in the Salisbury Police Department Services vehicle account 21021-577025. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department will utilize the funds appropriated for the insurance adjustment and purchase a new police emergency vehicle. Now therefore, we're ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget and is hereby amended as follows. Insurance proceeds account 01000-456935 by $27,123 and an increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Trust you can take that extra "and" out editorially.
It caught me there for a second.
Any discussion, any questions? Thank you. All those in favor of... Mr. Tillman, you're next again.
Okay. Ordinance number 2371.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I should take a motion, shouldn't I?
Oh.
All right. I'm in a hurry, too, I guess. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance number 2370 for second reading.
Is it moved?
Second.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Tillman, I apologize.
It's an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for the consulting services to evaluate fire services, system fees, and plans. Whereas the city desires to engage a fire services consultant to estimate the associated cost of fire services, and whereas the city believes that investing in the consulting service is necessary to reach an acceptable agreement with the county for their reimbursement to the city for the county's share of the fire services provided by the city. And whereas the city has received a proposal estimating the fees for the required services to be $30,000, and whereas the city and county have agreed to split the cost of the services, and whereas the city's FY 2016 budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover this purchase, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be, and hereby is amended as follows, with an increase in the current surplus available 01000-469810 by $15,000, and an increase in the fire department by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? All those in favor of approval of ordinance number 2370 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's Jackson.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Tillman, I'll entertain a motion, actually from the council, I'm going to do it again, for ordinance number 2371 for second reading, accepting a donation from the New Year's Eve, for the New Year's Eve event.
Second.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for a New Year's Eve event. Whereas the city desires to facilitate and support the downtown New Year's Eve celebration, and whereas the city believes that investing in this event will support economic activity downtown, and whereas the city has received $7,500 in pledges for contributions for the event, whereas the city's FY 2016 budget has not been amended to include an appropriation to expend the $7,500 contributed, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's FY fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be, and hereby is amended as follows, with an increase in the donations of 01000-469400 by $7,500, and an increase in the fire department by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? All those in favor of approval of ordinance number 2371 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's Jackson.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Tillman, I'll entertain a motion, actually from the council, I'm going to do it again, for ordinance number 2371 for second reading, accepting a donation from the New Year's Eve, for the New Year's Eve event.
Second.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for a New Year's Eve event. Whereas the city desires to facilitate and support the downtown New Year's Eve celebration, and whereas the city believes that investing in this event will support economic activity downtown, and whereas the city has received $7,500 in pledges for contributions for the event, whereas the city's FY 2016 budget has not been amended to include an appropriation to expend the $7,500 contributed, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's FY fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be, and hereby is amended as follows, with an increase in the donations of 01000-469400 by $7,500, and an increase in New Year's Eve event account 12500569209 by an equivalent amount.
Is that the same amount that was in it for first reading, or did it change?
It's changed.
Okay. For some reason, I had 5,000 in my head, but...
Does he know those?
Is it another one? Yes. Too many of them. Thank you. I mean, too many numbers. Donations. We've had quite a steady stream, not that I'm objecting at all, but I got it confused with something else. Any discussion on this item?
Thank you. So.
All those in favor of approval of ordinance number 2371 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now vote aye. That's unanimous. Entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance number 2373 for first reading to abandon unimproved roadbed of Burt Street.
Second.
Move.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to abandon the property shown in the plat attached to the documents there that runs, it's not, it's not an existing street, but just a platted and unopened street that runs next to Salisbury Fire Department Headquarters. And the purpose of the ordinance is to abandon that roadbed and to authorize the conveyance of two of the parcels to the adjacent property owners on the other side. The property on the side toward the city would, of course, be the city's property. An ordinance to the City of Salisbury to abandon an area of land being the unimproved roadbed of Burt Street between Cypress Street and Lake Street. Whereas Burt Street, formerly known as South Street, as shown on the plat entitled "Plat of Survey of Land of the FAD Company," dated April, May 1922, and recorded among the land records of Wycomico County, Maryland, in plat cabinet, 136 Folio 1 was never opened or paved by the City of Salisbury. Whereas the portions of Burt Street being abandoned are more particularly described as parcel A, and I'm going to skip the numbers there. Parcel B and parcels, parcel C and parcel D, being a total of 17,515.1 square feet, plus or minus, on exhibit A attached here, too. And whereas the owner of the land adjoining parcel A of Burt Street is Delmarva Real Estate Holdings, Inc. Of parcel B is the City of Salisbury, of parcel C is Rodney V. and Brenda D. Dawson, and of parcel D is the City of Salisbury. And whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Public Works has determined that the aforementioned areas of land have never been used by the public as unimproved, as unimproved and unpaved, and the city believes it is in the best interest of the city to abandon the aforementioned area of land, and deed parcel A and parcel C to the adjoining property owners as stated above. And whereas the city charter, section SC 11-2, gives the City of Salisbury charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas SC 16-8 allows the City of Salisbury to abandon or otherwise dispose of property that is not saleable, and whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Public Works has prepared, and the city solicitor has reviewed the proposed quitclaim deeds to release unimproved street, copies of which are attached here, too, as exhibit D. Whereas, and whereas the Director of Public Works provided the city council with a recommendation of the proposed road abandonment. The city at the, and I do not have the date of that. I don't know when that would have been, but we'll get that for you. But it was proposed at a previous work session. Now, therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's Salisbury hereby abandoned 17,515.1 square feet of Burt Street, and that the mayor of the City of Salisbury is hereby authorized to execute the attached deeds contained in exhibit B to convey the adjoining, to the adjoining owners the city's right title and interest in the abandoned street. And be it further ordained that this ordinance should take place, or take effect immediately.
Discussion from...
There are two separate deeds attached for the parcel A and parcel C.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, in the documentation, it says a letter from the adjoining property, parcel 1566, and the letter to Mr. Mold says, "We would like the additional property to be added to parcel 1566 for future development." Where, how would you get to that parcel if there's no street there?
They think they, they say they have access to it, so...
I'm just looking at the picture that was provided, and I'm not sure how you would get there.
Parcel 1603 is the same owner.
It becomes one parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because part of that adjacent...
Would that mean that they would need to tear down buildings on the lot in front of it in order to get, I'm just looking at the picture of the buildings on it. That's the only reason I have a question.
Mr. is going to expand.
I think it's just, it becomes part of the same lot that it's...
It's already on streetfront.
More grass to most adjacent, not, not a separate building on that lot.
We're east of Chase, if I recall, that part of the property.
Yeah, that's true.
Once this subdivision, or once we convey that property to them, parcel number 1566 was not landlocked by virtue of this road previously, but once we convey that parcel C to them, they're not going to be able to pull that parcel off separately anymore because it, without the adjacent parcel, it would be landlocked.
Is there any monetary value to that? And is there precedent for taking an abandoned street and essentially giving it?
Generally, when you abandon a street, the adjoining owner acquires the interest in up to the center of the road. And that's why the city acquires the interest in the road up to the center of the road on the other side, and we don't need to make any conveyance in that.
If I may...
Mr. Boda is going to draw me a diagram.
Yeah, that's the same thing we did with Wayne Street.
Madam President, exactly.
That's true.
That's fine. I don't have a disagreement with that. I just have, just had a couple of minor questions about it. Boy, you...
I was just going to mention that it was the Wayne, the Wayne Street where Salisbury University was the property owner. It was similar to that.
Okay. No other questions?
No.
Call the question for approval of ordinance number 2373 for first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye, and that is unanimous. Did our scouts have any public comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will conclude the meeting this evening. Thank you all for joining us. Oh, I'm sorry.
What? What was the question?
Ms. Nichols, do we have the second reading for the bundles of joy?
It's on the 16th, isn't it?
That is on 16th, yes.
Because we had to advertise...
And a special meeting.
It was a special meeting last month, or year?
Yeah, we did the first read again, the special meeting last time.
And they had to have two weeks to advertise the...
Okay.
I believe Gloria Smith sent you that email.